Saturday. First Saturday.
Remind me.
You want to make it out there?
Yeah, we just, we enjoyed that life. And McDonald's, I saw a lot of things we hadn't seen. Jimmy, I'm going to charge it for the one square one. Then, yeah, seventy bucks. Two weeks ago, it's fifty here. Seventy dollars. We'll get you in the sergeant. Well, I've been late every time, so I thought we'd be early.
Well, hey, you're early. I know the mayor's, he started at six o'clock. He gets everybody sitting down and ready to go.
You don't like him?
No.
Too long.
No.
Keep moving.
Keep it moving. I'll be sergeant in arms and just say, okay, everybody sit down. That's good.
Because if you want chat.
Yes. Again, that's what you do longer. Yeah, yeah, I think it's a line break. It's all very exciting. Then we're actually gonna, we're getting on carpet. Uh, we already just had them come in, we're gonna get a carpet here. Um, I got posted, but we'll have my ex-council meeting. We're just doing a little, little cleaning.
I got three white cars.
You know, three, three in turn. You know, we're service, we're still waiting for the other two. It's probably a six, eight or something. Yeah, they do it in defense. And we, uh, because we had so many, we were down with one car. Because we just, they were older and should have been all the house. And we just had a lot of issues, so they approved, which we'll talk about. It was due to keep that one to twenty twenty-two, so that one will stay. The other one was a, uh, twenty fourteen, uh, twenty sixteen. Yeah, they were. So anyway, yeah, we, and I just want to, to me, Biden. Yeah, and, you know, one of the things I got with the change of the culture when I came here and sort of that just sort of. Cleaner, so, yeah, we got a lot of his positive demographics. Yeah, it was one of those things that we just.
Some ways that are a lot more visible.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, it's, uh, it's gonna take some, we have to keep that twenty twenty, twenty-four. This is the night shift. And the black, we keep all day. Yeah, we're gonna be getting them out.
Takes about six months or you want to.
Yeah, it takes a long time because we're in line. Because if you notice, when you drive by, they got gals, they got.
Under Crisco, they got.
Yeah, budget meeting, the first. Budget workshop, workshop session, discussion, proposal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, and all things related to that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. If you go to page five in your packet or on your Chromebook, you can see the various rates that were calculated. Uh, that was, uh, it's that thirteen-page sheet that eventually kicks those, uh, four rates out for us. Uh, the budget that we're gonna look at tonight was built, uh, utilizing the previous tax rate that y'all had discussed of, uh, point one seven three six four six, uh, for the coming fiscal year. Again, our, no new revenue rate, which used to be called the effective rate, is sixteen point two two, uh, eight two cents. Voter approval rate is eighteen point one five six cents. And then we have a demand this rate, that's where, uh, if we had an emergency, needed to raise five hundred thousand dollars, that's the rate we could go to. And that would require a vote, so the proposed rate right now falls into category that is not susceptible to voter petition. So again, that rate is, if Council chooses to state at that rate, anything under eighteen cents, uh, there is no petition. Uh, the budget you've got tonight is the condensed version. We went over all of those little categories previously, and we can go back to those if you want to and then look at that. But since we've got all the other funds in here, I was gonna go a little quicker and see if y'all have any questions. So again, um, none of the revenues have changed since previous. The, uh, administration expenses are also the same as our police. What this budget does include in the bottom on page seven is, uh, should council preside, uh, that they would like us to create a new position, a patrol position for, uh, the police department. That is, the net cost to the general fund is ninety-three thousand dollars. Uh, again, previously I had sent out a breakdown on that, uh, if council approves a position, yeah, and that ninety-three thousand will be split up into categories up in that, uh, police department budget.
And ninety-three thousand, that's fully loaded?
Fully loaded, so that includes, uh, some overtime. This position is proposed to, uh, be forty hours a week, not have the guaranteed overtime of our twelve-hour rotating shifts. Um, includes all benefits, the workers' comp, uniform, everything.
Okay.
So that's all, that's all loaded. Again, it backs out the CCPD share, uh, because they improved the budget, which, uh, drew us thirty thousand dollars. So again, that will pull over for CCPD.
And does that seem that employee would select the highest cost insurance?
It assumes, yes, all, and with a family.
Yeah.
So worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
Um, for budget purposes. Um, and then it also includes, uh, anticipated overtime savings of twelve thousand dollars. So again, we are, we're well over budget this year. Uh, again, we've had, because times will be, we're down to, uh, we were lost thirty-three percent of our patrol staff, actually half of our patrol, patrol staff, and thirty-three percent of the police department due to, uh, what, we've got one out long-term, Yildiz, and we had that some month made. You know, they planned a long vacation for six months and it was, you know, non-refundable, so we were, we were really short. So lieutenant and chief, we've been running radar. Um, but we all do, we, as long as they, we're small, we, we work well together and we all know that it's time to do something, we all just pulling our pants and we can get out there and get the job done.
You're running radar.
No, I'm sort of. But I have ridden with the guys, so, uh.
So let's see, at least it was, uh, two and a quarter over.
Yes, sir. About two and a quarter thousand.
I have a quick question about contracted services. I know part of that's code enforcement, what else is under that category? It's a pretty big category.
Services is actually the, is the largest.
Yeah.
Um, that is where we have legal, engineering, planning. Uh, they also include gas well inspections, which is twenty-four thousand dollars, but we, uh, get that money back from the gas well operators. So it's washed, but it is included as an expense.
Okay.
Those, but those are variants.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions on the general fund side? Again, this projects having almost two and a quarter left, and then, uh, that would give us an ending fund balance of eight hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. At the end of this year. We'll go on to the next page then, street maintenance, sales tax. We are collecting sales tax at a, uh, higher rate because of that, uh, reallocation that happened in twenty twenty-three. And so I'm projecting sales tax collections of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, for this coming fiscal year. Um, there is a fund balance in there, and so interest is continuing to accrue. I adjusted that down. Uh, I was a little aggressive on how I, uh, did the interest for last year, but I missed that by a little bit. So I'm more comfortable with the five eighty-eight, uh, for the total revenue for the fiscal year. But this is where we would load in, we talked about Jeter Phase Two, we eat about a million dollars, that's where we would account for that. Also two hundred and fifty thousand for our spring maintenance, so we do all the piles, crack ceiling. We pay the worst streets, uh, residents' streets in town, work those areas, um, to make sure that we're maintaining those roads, that's our abilities. And engineering, that's about the cost it'll take for, uh, Westwood to manage the Jeter project and the, uh, spring maintenance contract. Do you have any questions on that? That one is for reauthorization in twenty twenty-five? So again, this, uh, this one has to be reallocated every four years and less, uh, during that election, council decides to call it for a longer period, it's twenty years. So the only difference there is when you go to twenty years, you can actually bond against it. At four years, you really, they, nobody will loan you money, but, uh, you can use pretty great projects, we bond against half a million a year. Just don't consider, as we go down that path, we gotta, you're plus worried about that. Do you have any other questions on street maintenance? Uh, the street improvement fund, uh, council designated, that is where we actually took care of Jeter Phase One. Um, so we still have two hundred and forty-five thousand sitting in there, I haven't proposed anything specific. Um, we don't have any engineering on the culvert that's on Gibbons near Seals Road. Uh, that will may come up this year, depending on the rain. So again, I, if y'all have anything specific you'd like me to load in there, uh, we can, but right now I'm just letting it sit, because I don't have anything specific to throw at that, you know.
Well, that, that culvert right now, we're just, we're not gonna do anything, just.
It's in, it's in bad shape and still functioning unless we get rains like we did. Of course, a lot of ours didn't function, uh, wouldn't rain like that.
That's amazing.
But neither did the multi-million dollar storm sewers in Dallas or Fort Worth or anywhere else, so. Everybody had flooding. So it's, that one's not urgent, like the one that collapsed on West Jeter, after we had one collapsing, uh, was that on Stonewood, I think.
Land Hall.
And then it involved every year, so it's not in that kind of segment.
Yeah, I think it was probably the first one that, that will go in time.
Yes.
Because I think what, if you notice down there on the base of that, was it crossing, was it crossing water that, that put those in that time? They did the one on Jeter. And the one down there, and they left it to a little, a big sink after they got through with it, and they left that incline in there. And there's probably about a two and a three-inch rock there now, and two pounds, if you look at the very base, there are water that gets back underneath it, and it caused the way it fell down.
Yeah, there's a couple of those around.
The engineer has talked about doing head walls, at least on the upstream side. Uh, we may have to do some of that to help protect it, as, you know, again, the best side, it gets most of that impact, because once it starts to wash, you know, that's when we have real problems. Do you have any questions on those council designated?
Oh, that, well, I know there's no major burn, uh, where, where, she is up, because it's stamped with.
It, it's in your general fund.
General, okay, yes, sir.
That's one way to picture it. It's really more of a line item, it's just designated.
But that's why I saw it. Thank you.
Uh, there's our reserve fund, again, we've done, we'll do a transfer, still hasn't been done this fiscal year, you know, it was approved. Um, I'm not proposing anything new in the reserve funds, six hundred and fifteen thousand will be, uh, in there, but at the end of twenty twenty-five, uh, we will start twenty twenty-five with six hundred thousand in there, that means our twenty-five percent goal for reserve funds. The next page, eleven, is the economic development liability fund. Again, this one, we talked about consolidated cash, we've not consolidated this, we leave it there so that we know that the money is there. Shannon and Andrew go through the sales taxes and property taxes and make sure that that is properly allocated, so we don't come up short, uh, when that is due. And because it always goes across two tax years, it's always a complicated process, so this makes it a lot easier and make sure we have that available. Building maintenance fund, uh, we didn't load anything in here because we actually, uh, last time, used our capital fund, because that's what we discussed and privileged to build. We're pretty much done, unless something happens behind Town Hall, uh, the painting, I don't know if.
Says looks.
Yeah, because it's flat right there.
Between the landscaping, uh, the exterior painting, the interior work, I mean, it's, it's a bright town hall, people seem to enjoy it up here now. I don't think it's us, I think it's us. The, the restriping, it's really made it a inviting place for people to come and take care of the town business. So again, I haven't designated anything there, and you've got two hundred and twenty-four thousand left over, if y'all wanted to put something here or something comes up again. Unless I have something specific, I rather leave it in your bank account, we just amend the budget later if necessary. Court security fund, these, these are funds that are, uh, generated by the tickets that are issued. Again, this fund is restricted, it can only be used for court security, we also pay for the bailiff, uh, each month out of this. Um, so it's not much we do here except for, uh, specifically related to court, because we can just keep. Uh, same on your next page, page fourteen, for technology fund, same thing, uh, that comes from, one of them's four dollars per ticket, paid, and one's four ninety per ticket paid. Uh, one thing, uh, I'll mention, the budget narrative, we will have that for your final budget, there were a lot of, there was a lot of inaccurate information in the previous text, if you will, that, uh, accompanied the budgets before I got here. I had spent a lot of time getting that updated, so you will have, each fund will be described for the taxpayers, and for you as well, so you can see what each one is, where those funds come from as well, uh, in written form, because not everybody reads, things like this is easy. So again, it'll tell us the story of the budget, and so you will have that before it's adopted, uh, this time around. And then a lot longer to fix than I thought it was going to. A court truancy fund, again, that is another fund that is very strict on how we can, uh, spend those. We almost never have anything that we can spend that on, so that one just continues to grow, because we don't, uh, have a juvenile, a caseworker, and so that would just sits there. And that's it, designated, so don't get ahead of yourself. Uh, community development corporation, y'all, they already adopt the, there's a first part of this. So again, community development corporation, you'll see more detail, uh, in the items, uh, before, yes, later in the meeting or in the regular meeting. Uh, this is just, again, big, a picture, uh, revenue expenditures. Um, again, if you have questions here, I can dig you through here, or we can wait and ask, we might go to that later. I knew them all numbers twice and three times. Uh, crime control prevention district, is that also one connected? Yeah, I see, I read my packet. Actually, I just can't remember which day it's on. Uh, again, the details will be, uh, in your, uh, agenda during your regular meeting, but this is just the overview, uh, showing the primary revenues and expenditures, uh, for the CCPD. All any other questions y'all have on the budget?
Getting by. I'm all the same. Done a lot of work to make this make sense and make it easy, and it's gonna get even better as you're going along, so I appreciate that, it's.
Thank you.
It's really straightforward, easy to digest.
Shannon's been a big help, I haven't had to do all that. We'll find ways to make it. Shannon and I, of course, we've worked together and asked that, we are working, uh, each cycle we get a little bit better. Um, again, the, the goal is to simply make this, so that you can see where your money is and where it's going. Maybe some of them might like to do that as well, because y'all need a little more information, we want it to be easy for the residents to go through that and ask questions, and we inform. Well, the air shows, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm trying to, we, we, during the meeting, we started to, uh, written names.
Usually a day, four hours.
Fairly slow, we don't have a water super, that's pretty cool.
I would do this a lot of work, I have a lot of hands.
I mean, trust me, I can, residents, they have to be confused if I want to do it. Why don't they just want a job? Home finances, business finances, when you come here.
You gotta talk to the ducks and bunnies. Duck, ducks and bunnies, but keep it.
One word is open, everybody knows, everything out there.
I have not known, yeah.
Is it open, is it really?
The drive-through's open.
Drive-through on, I went to the front, I could go by yesterday and I just couldn't bring myself back to the.
Yeah, but it's on the drive-through.
They were a little slow, little, but they got the order right today, and they had one upstairs, and order.
Oh, that is, there are two lines to order. I, I thought I could see that.
The neighbors are gonna be waiting up to it.
Pull over.
And you saw the seven.
Yeah.
Really? The phone ring, you know, where everybody's.
They, they will.
For anybody else, I feel bad.
Standard email, Rudy.
Oh. Right, thanks too. And it, but that one doesn't even come here, it doesn't have a drive-through, and there's no food permit, so we don't even see it. I don't know it because they sent it to me not knowing they needed to go to Captain Mercy.
Are they gonna start the sweep?
They're working to abandon easement, I haven't seen anything, I don't need to abandon easement, but they.
It looks free.
It's gonna be tight.
Tight.
It's gonna be tight. It is, uh, no walk-up, um, you know, it's, it's just dry.
I'm going down for it.
And suppose that cluster is getting close, so.
But that's pretty much, that's where they're.
You bet your life.
We have those things that, shall I get my stuff?
Yeah. She burned the van sheets. I always said it, I have said. She had her horses boarded, uh, Jan Wallen. But she wants.
We all want that.
So she found the house next door, and she just went.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be weird.
She's there as always.
That was a different. My first one. Next one, we go again.
That's why I paid.
I guess maybe it's like. No, this is very, you've got, they, all of them. All land that. Over there. Is all. Okay, they all started off. I think, but it's, I think, and now I'm going to be. No, I, I just, I can't. We actually, those have been a lot of mine, okay. I took them, oh, yeah. And they only got so much. Yeah, so at some point, that's.
What you know? Hang it in there. Yeah.
You can save it all up, yes, yes, yes. Next week, I'll. I glossed it, air has, and it's wet, all you, all you see is brown. Ten years ago. So I think it's a strong. Hi, Sue.
Yeah, so.
Do what you want. I saw your guys. Always in my.
We need to, we have sold up yet.
I thought it gets better.
And, uh, and. That was. For.
It's. You wish for. This. I think.
Yeah. Yeah. It's not.
It's. Sorry.
But.
For.
It's.
You know, that takes time. You're. AJ. And. You know. For. Oh, yeah. Uh, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Um. There. Yeah. You. This. You. There was. What? Yes, I did. We. One. Two. We go here. Yeah, yeah. The. It's. Yeah. Probably. Very. Yeah. It's like. Yeah. We're. Oh. It's. I know. It's. And especially the rest. They make some. That. We. This morning. Harry. Oh, yeah. Okay. I'm saving right. And then. And then you're. I think that. Your father. Well, that. I don't know. Yeah. I'm. I'm. Sorry. I'm. Everything's. Oh, yeah. They. Right. Yeah. We don't say. I think. They. No, I don't make you wait. I'm. I didn't. It's. We're. I'm seeing. All. And. Like. Yeah. I'm. I'm. We sold. Yeah. Which is. I saw. He's. I was. All. Our. 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 And. Yes. Thank you. Most. Those. Yes, sir. I guess. Yeah. Well. I. Now. I. I. It's. It's. Better. I'm. 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 That. That. It's. I'm. But. So. Your. And it's. It could be a very. So. Right. Or. She. So. And the kid. I guess. But. Yeah. More. Next. Bitch. Why? Well, that's one. I. It's just. You. That. You're. Yeah. So. Yeah. And. And. I guess. Yeah. Yeah. I get. Well. Of course. So. That's. That's not. It's. And. I lost. I'm. Say. That. It's. Well, it's. It's. But. Some of them. Yes. Actually. Ten. You know. So. It's. The. We. In this. You. But. We. Yeah. But. Same. And. It's. Yeah. We're trying to. Tell. I just. Didn't. Do. This. Sure. I'm getting. So. Now. It's. I'm. Last. I'm. I'm. Not like you want to. Well. In fact, I look, I look. I say. Always. Always. Yeah. I. That's. What I just. So. I did. Do. That. If. You.
I want. Real. Time. To show. Uh. Counting. Being ordered. At least. And.
I think it's. To. Do. Yeah. States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public participation. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a public. Meeting. Parents department, agenda, town secretary. Representative. Second. Second. Five five one point oh oh seven of the Texas government code. Citizens wishing to. Address council for items in this public hearing and with recognizing the topic here is open. Please indicate on the form if you wish to speak here in this specific agenda item. And remember, council members are not allowed to answer questions. During public participation, please state your name and any other questions. Pointed representative, opportunity, Dell.
Yeah. I think we're gonna have a video.
Okay.
Is that right, Hannah?
We.
We've been practicing all month.
Here's a good stuff. Good stuff. What we have. Need to chat.
Yeah.
He uses. Before I hit play.
They all. Everything. And it's all.
The opportunity regional water district. Provides drinking water to twenty nine rural communities in North Texas. The region is expected to increase nearly fivefold in the next fifty years. To meet this demand.
Wow. Yeah. Yes. I will. And you. Be up with. From. I'll see. And just. A speaker there. There you go.
There we go.
Additional water sources are needed. Lake Rhine Hall is being built on the North Sulphur River just north of La Dounia. As opportunity's first district own reservoir. So the opportunity regional water district. Provides drinking water to twenty nine rural communities in North Texas. The region is expected to increase nearly fivefold in the next fifty years. To meet this demand, additional water sources are needed. Lake Rhine Hall is being built on the North Sulphur River just north of La Dounia. As opportunity's first district own reservoir.
Okay, we tried. Sorry, Dell. Charge up.
Maybe next month we'll have it.
We played it times today.
I was listening to her down the hall, I can almost recite it.
Sorry.
Oh, well. Uh. We'll get it next time, next month. Still be good information. What's it probably done? Was to also show that this is, can be a destination. Place to go. And, uh, rebellion. Beer. Fishing beer. And museum up there for artifacts. And we're founding the lake. Ross Grove. Almost to that. And then, uh. All the different. Terminities that have an interest in fishing and all that. So I wanted to show you guys where you can go fishing. Or that. So anyway, we should have next month. I do have another thing that. And that seems to be very interesting. Uh, each month. I get a. All these different newspapers and everything else. What's going on out in this area? Uh, new developments, this and that and the other. And. I, I give this a tad. And if you guys want to see it, just sign it out. And get it back to us. And you'd be surprised how much of the information or anything.
Dell, you weren't supposed to tell them that you gave you that, they just thought I knew it all. From you now.
So you want me to first one more?
Should have.
You can put your name. On it.
Sign it.
Dell, is that called impact?
Yeah.
Is it the same as that little newspaper?
Yeah, that.
Oh, yeah. That's a good information.
But then we just pull out. We have a journal that goes through and pulls all the information about. New developments and what's going on in. Our area. I think. Upper. Side. To. Uh. Purposes of that. And very, very interesting.
Good.
Like the riverwalk over there, there's been a lot of things there. And. Talks about. What's happening going on. Uh, hillside. You know. It's called. So like they. For them. Doing that. I would. The K U. The big. They're all that land.
We'll have an entitlement back next year. There's some reasons for that. Part of that is, you know, you remember E S T two is created in January. And so even though they have a contract with E S T one, E S T one has been providing that service for free because he has seen two been having the money. So I gotta pay like three million dollars and that's not including the debt. So we'll be working on that next year, trying to figure out the debt and right now all loans are being already used as one. So some challenges there. We'll figure that in the future. The commissioners will have to give some grading on that, but but we we have adopted it. We're in a good place. Uh, we did. We're not living on, um, um, borrowed money or or living on, um, um, but basically we're basically not living on, um, a credit. We're not living in this. And so felony management has reserves, uh, which is going to be helpful for us and allow us to kind of grow. It actually made investing, so we'll be in a good, good place. Um, with that being said, it has been a tremendously busy month because of anticipation of the budget. I feel like I'm just going ragged here. Sorry, but we've been working everything from the new amends coming, two of the three amends have arrived at dealership. One of those answers will go to the station five thirteen. Uh, we're also starting last month a hiring process. So the good news is we were worried by that test. It was a very competitive market where we had fifty nine applicants, which was good. Um, unfortunately, still those candidates weren't qualified, didn't meet all the criteria that we asked them to have. So between that and interviews, we're down to about thirty three candidates. So still a really good, uh, place to be. I feel confident we should be able to hire going into next fiscal year and be able to do that. Other things are going on. We went to the new station out in Northlake, uh, which is way overdue. And we we're about to finalize. We're working this week and next to finalize. It kind of be pinned on. It won't happen until after October one, but we'll be, um, there's a go and purchase. So we're purchasing the land. The building is being started. It's a metal building that's being built and shipped. We've had four bids on the flat work, the construction concrete and all that for it to sit on. It'll be, uh, so it's gonna be, um, we're on schedule for sometime April. And so that allows us to kind of cover that kind of southwest area of our industry, which currently we've been paying run ups. It's gonna actually benefit us more because that contract is going up. We're getting to the point where it makes more sense paying them more money than we would see. And so we have to kind of think about that. The kind of whole reason for looking at that, especially with E S T two. So a lot of things happening, um, uh, operationally, uh, preparing for the budget, all those things happening. And but we've done a lot of good things in the future too. So I want to, uh, one, I want to commend, uh, recognize several faces who were at the the tavern, uh, last month, uh, for those who don't know, one of our firefighters was injured off duty in a motorcycle accident. Seriously injured, uh, you know, he's doing better, but he got a long, long road to go if he ever comes back to work, let's be honest. Uh, but we did a big auction and 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 it was really great to see you two coming together and, uh, and support that. I don't have a total of man fire firefighters that I think, uh, they've given out the present, but they had collected all the money. People still have money. But I think they're expecting around twenty thousand dollars, which would be a huge, what's all the money kind of amount? Um, so that was a huge, uh, just kind of emotional thing. He was there. He hadn't met him. He was there and he was in a wheelchair, uh, so we're not seeing him out in public. And so it was a really great time. I appreciate all those that attended that. So again, but then the other big news we're coming up in September. We're doing our second annual buzz ride, which is in honor of September eleventh. We'll be doing that on September seventh, Saturday from, uh, eleven to four P M. Um, there at station five eleven, and you can, uh, sign up in advance if you want to online, or you can just walk up and do it. But we 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 love doing that. When I got there, we wanted to do something for nine eleven. Well, we could stand outside and we could fly and we'll say, I said, let's do something to give back. Let's do something to give back to the community. So we thought we'd do something where I think it's pretty buzz ride. And we've actually hooked up, uh, with the gentleman who does it for our mountain, uh, May Seale. And we were working with him, so it's kind of a part of the government. So it kind of hopefully may even get some more marketing. So if you could attend that, I encourage you to do that, but that'll take any questions.
So you said you have three qualified candidates. How many positions do you try to fill?
We're gonna be doing in the budget, we've got nine positions. Um, now we're waiting for one reason why we have reserves to decide. We did put in for another sacred rack with twelve positions for the new station. If we don't get that safer, which we should know the next month, then we will use our reserves to fund that. So that's kind of what we're playing with. It could be a total of twelve positions, um, potentially, if we have, unfortunately. But we have to go back to the minimum budget.
So you have a total of sixty nine?
Yes, I think that's what we have totally is, uh, sixty nine total or volunteers, a little part time. Yes, it's a whole sixty nine included. We have six volunteered, uh, that basically it's a recruitment opportunity for us. Uh, we're one of few departments to still do that. They don't really count as our frontline personnel. We're more kind of observer, but they think that we're ready for them. And really, we've seen, uh, some of our firefighters who started out there, but they come to the cross and actually get hired on it. So either they're younger, they're in school, and they're in academy. They're not certified yet, but it just gets into the door. And so when I got there, uh, I wasn't familiar with volunteering, but my impression of the fully paid fire department, um, I didn't know much about it, but the more I learned, I really enjoyed it. And it just kind of brings that community where people want to be involved and help out. And, uh, and it gives an opportunity for those who are starting in the business, but they don't have the qualification and the education yet, that is required of that, uh, is the minimum opportunity. So sixty nine doesn't include that when you ask for the total.
Thank you, Chief.
Line of credit. I did see the water booth. Man, I just left Lantan. I I do this, Phil. I have to go and all the and leaders lined up water booth yourself.
Number three, police department, July two thousand twenty four statistics and activity chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, town of Barnville residents. Uh, if you look at a packet, um, we had, did have a minor increase in calls for service this compared to last, uh, July. We had seven more calls and I think that's shattering. And if you go to the the calls for service, um, obviously there's several, the agency assist is usually one of ours that we have quite a few of. They've actually gone down, but we still have that. The agency assists. Your commercial alarm is more than our residential. And then, um, we had, uh, less accidents this past month than we did the previous month, which is good. Is there anything in there that you need me to answer? Anything that jumps at y'all that? All right. And then now if you go to the uniform crime records, I need to make an adjustment here because I talked to lieutenant. Apparently when you add, you go to these different line items, you'll notice it's not totaling at the bottom. So twenty twenty three should really show seventeen. And then we had one larceny this past month that went to eleven, but it didn't calculate to fifteen, could have been fourteen last year. So he's gonna work on that as some something in the, I don't know if it's Excel, whatever he's using, it's not totaling the numbers. Still, again, very, very low numbers. Sorry. Um, we just gotta, you know, when we have to report our U C Rs every month, they keep sending, hey, we're not getting your U C Rs. Well, fine, we got it worked out. When you have a zero like we've had in the past, and we don't have any of that we claim, there's a place in there you have to go and hit where they're seeing it, but there's nothing there because we didn't have any to report because we have to do that every month. Report our U C R to the state. Um, anyway, uh, you look at the, uh, it, um, initiated self-initiated, you know, two hundred twenty seven total. We have quite a few traffic stops. We continue to work heavily on our traffic. As you know, we're short right now, so those numbers have gone down just because I'm not, I don't have as many officers out on the street. When I get fully staffed again, you'll see those numbers come up, obviously, because people will be out there, uh, you know, monitoring our our streets. Um, let's see. Any questions on that?
No, I was just, uh, I was just looking at, um, the stats each month compared to this timeline of your, I mean, every month except June was an increase in costs.
Yes, and and that's what I think. So like, I mean, we all know it's traffic. They're getting more building out here. We've got different residential, you know, you got, uh, uh, what is Eagle Ridge? You got, uh, you know, Hudson Hills. You got all these different, you know, just in our city or our town, we're having more, uh, people coming in. So obviously that could increase on calls for service. They're still low, and I like that. Um, I don't know. And me and the lieutenant are here. It seems like we're getting all the calls. So out of a hundred and twenty six of us, I feel like I've aged about twenty. But I'm I'm probably, but it just seemed, what did y'all do? Nothing. We happened to meet and looked at each other like, okay, we're, anyway, but there's still, yes, they have increased, and I think we'll continue to have that, but nothing or shatter. We'll be okay. Once we get fully staffed.
Yes, Chief of General, the larceny burglary that is either typically the the commercial districts, uh, and some, we've had a couple in our new subdivisions where people run off with, uh, the appliances that are out there. So it's not crime in the interior of the town, but it is related to commercial property.
Yes, sir. Most of those larcenies are prover. Now, we did have, you know, the new, um, overall supplies to help, which is the Eagle Ridge. We have had some fast, as you know, anytime you got construction, they're gonna come to get materials. Uh, the nice thing about that, we did just get our clock camera installed. We moved a couple of clock cameras. We're not increasing numbers. We're just relocating them. Because there are a couple of spots I looked at and said, that's not really a good place for them. So I got the clock. There is a minor charge for that. So we're moving two. One goes to I T D Lee, and then one, because going into that new subdivision, and then one goes in, and one is already didn't put up there at Clyde's sale. Met with, uh, I didn't meet with them. I talked with Omar. He's one of the builders. He wanted to, uh, buy his own. I did it with Ray. So they're purchasing two. And so at Clydesdale, we will have going in and exit. So if somebody does move the subdivision, they gotta come out. So we'll get reads on both. And then they're gonna put another one up by, uh, Kentucky Derby coming in that way. And he did reach out and I reached out to our rep. There's a rep that does just HOAs. I think I mentioned y'all in J V. We had two at a HOA that they wanted to pay. And so they maybe they page away to Hudson Hills. I think maybe looking at that. So if they purchase two more, great for us. We get to see it all. Um, it prevents crime, but also we do have something that theft or whatever gives us great opportunity to have some leads to where we can go get the bad guys.
Those also plug our holes because again, those disconnections that we didn't have previously when the block cameras covered almost everything, and that now closes them down.
And it's great that the woman that I see dealing with this gives her exposure there, but I've noticed even driving around, I mean, really that area is unprotected. And I was just curious, I'm gonna ask you one of my questions that I was gonna ask you, you haven't answered it. That's what kind of call will we get for lost materials off of these new construction? Because a lot of that is just totally un, that is exposed. And there seem to be no coverage there except for the cameras. Uh, and one thing that would help would be especially in I T D coming out of Hudson Hill. Because that told that place going in with that saddle is totally exposed.
Yes, sir. And what I did as I moved the decoy, we have a car that could be, uh, manned over there. Um, I'm not sure if it's manned twenty four seven, but it just to prevent that. And then also, once we get, you know, we had the damage to our, uh, the camera trailer that's at the Kroger. We're still waiting. That's been the challenge, but we now have, uh, we've got the funds. We're getting ready to order the new panels. So once we get those panels in, we can use that and all move it around. Because if we do have something like that, at least we can pop it up and maybe with the clock cameras and that, at least, and sometimes they'll go in there. Oh, wait a minute, wrong on camera. They'll go hopefully to our valve or flower now. So just get out of the park.
As you used to have that your department, your control department.
Yes, it's still there. Uh, and it's
Then especially if some of these areas that don't, we have the coverage that that we like to see, it shouldn't turn sometimes. It's like what I was saying, oops. I don't realize them. So, you know, it turns, so.
The trailer is a great tool, but we've also developed a policy now that if a hailstorm is expected, we're closing up our solar panels. Because that's what we're dealing with. The solar panels that I love having again, uh, second time in less than twelve months.
Any questions on that piece?
They have a new squad car, a white squad car running around town. Looks pretty sharp.
Thank you. I think we've had a lot of compliments actually from other agencies. They're like, man, even the fire department staff, I think a couple of their guys, wow. It is a good, and it is cooler. It is, um, it stands out. It's more visible. Um, and like I said, when I came here, there were some things that the mayor wanted me to do and that and, and, you know, our image culture. We're changing up a little bit and just sort of, you know, you remarket yourself. And I think it really is a good look. It's cooler and cleaner. Uh, but yeah, thank you, sir. I think it
When's the election get to the defender?
We are on the list. And if you drive by Defender, you see Dallas, you see families all over. So I asked and I said, I just went, uh, over there yesterday because we need to do the tent on those income tent. So we'll have to do the tent for them. He told me, you know, sixty eight months. I said, George, can you give me another one? And he's like, laughs. So to answer that question, I couldn't, you know, would I love to, I may get a call tomorrow. I may get a call in two months, but and I appreciate y'all doing this and it happened. We got one in under the wire kind of thing, I think, and that one came out in nine weeks. That's unheard of. And I told the, we got one, um, a guy waiting. He's been waiting a year to get his car back. So and this happens all over. And I think I've explained that where I was before, it just takes a long time. Wrong call is that way. You may get a car in February delivered, but you're not gonna get it until out to December. Uh, it's just the way it is. And, um, but yes, I I hope we get them soon. But it's gonna probably take a while to get all of them out. So we will have the four marked units and then we'll just have one on par.
They originally tell you like, did you say?
They, he said that hopefully I'll have one out in December. I hope. Um, if I did another one out earlier, then that'd be great. But if we get one out in December, that'd be great. Um.
We have been holding those units. Lieutenant Scudder and I had to go over on, uh, the call where I thought I needed him there, and he used one of the unmarked units. So again, there's been times you've been down to one patrol. So part of the reason we're letting these sit is because we at least have vehicles to get our officers there if we need them.
And the hell thing, I don't want to let them sit over there. Why? When they can be protected here. It's just until you make it, shoot me the call and say, I need the car. Because what we'll do, um, we'll take the twenty thirteen and the the white one, and we'll take it over. And they'll take the radio out and then they'll do the outfitting there. And then the last one will be the one that we spent the money on, nine nine six. That will be the last one that will go in, uh, and to outfit. So we're working. I love to say at the end of the year, we get all of them done, but I doubt that one. It's not as long as waiting for a fire truck. It's not gonna be three years, but it's gonna take a little few more months. Okay. Any other questions?
I just want to say, like I said, completely, too often we're we're all guilty of taking things for granted. But I can tell you, we're responsive. We've got citizens that, I mean, I'm sure that others, they very appreciate the exposure that you got and your officers are giving to them out there on the streets. And they love it. And they see you out there with them, stopping and talking to them, and they really appreciate that. And I just want to let you know that, you know, we don't take that for granted. Fortunately, I won't say thank you because that goes the wrong way to getting your officers out there and please let them know that we appreciate it.
Yes.
I will. Thank you. I I I love it. Like I said, this is a great place to work. They get to actually be a cop again. It's fun. I've always been, I may get a motor soccer, be a traffic cop. I'll put that in next year. Like, you know, come on, leather boots. Uh, it had to be a lot. Uh, but so on the back page, this was something that I must say I never thought I was gonna do in my career. I actually, um, went through, um, the first phase of the C G S audit, which is the Criminal Justice Information Services Audit. This will have to happen every three years. What it is, is to make sure compliance, uh, with to, so we can utilize, uh, the the computers for your criminal district checks, N C I C, T C I C. And everyone here, we had to have staff with different levels. Basic was just for staff. That had to do it. All the girls had to do it. And what you're gonna see, we had to rechange the code. That code is the P D has to be different than this code. Because you, it's restricted area. And then before he does a walkthrough, which he'll end up doing down the road, I've already submitted a hundred and ten questions. I had to get with our I T department. A lot of that was I T. I had to go up to communications up in Denton. They helped me work through this. It was quite a process. I had to ask for an extension because he asked if I've ever done it. Well, I've signed off on it. But I used to have like communication specialists and other people, you know, help me with that. It was interesting. I learned a lot. Um, but we'll start putting, we have to put signs like restricted area. There's certain things that we have to do. I have to take a different kind of test, just like the lieutenant. Uh, I T has a different kind of test that they have, but I have to manage all of that with our auditor down in, uh, Austin, um, our D P S. So then I submitted that yesterday. I told that I felt like I went through midterms or did a thesis or whatever. I'm done. So I got to submit that. You had to do a bunch of policies. I had sixteen new policies and readings of all this stuff. It was, like I say, interesting, taxing, but I got it off my plate. Um, I didn't want to put on the lieutenant. He's sort of, he and I are gonna, we're both what they call, um, we're like the security officers. He's on the list with me, but he had other things going on, so I just took it and said, I'll ring with it. Do it. But, um, he did. He was supportive on that. And then the other thing we have on that, he'll come do a visit. I don't know when. Other than that, we're rolling along.
Correct. Councilman Sam, I would like to, uh, we've heard some of the same things. And one of the things that the mayor and I had talked to Chief about that we came on is get out there and engage with them. Um, you know, we're the ones who decide whether or not they continue to support y'all as council and as y'all support the department. The best way to do that is to get out there and engage with them. And so that they feel that you're you're present. And he has taken that to our favor. Led by example, he has, he's had them running radar. Uh, my guys are in the office either, like the guys that run radar. You know, at their competitions, um, you know, how they, those types of things. So I'm glad that you're here as well.
You don't stop bicycles, do you?
Yeah, you can ride bicycles. Stop bicycles. I haven't stopped one yet. They have a stop sign. There's one that rides at like eight, seven thirty or eight o'clock, but she usually stops at the stop sign.
Uh, number four, administration, July two thousand twenty four report, town administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, we are nearing the end of the budget cycle. I'd like to see a little bit, uh, less than seventeen percent remaining to be collected, um, on revenues. It's just thirty six, I think it's thirty six in your packet. Uh, and we are actually over, Chief Mayor, we're talking about this. This is the way it comes out in our reports. So you see the parentheses. He's always thinking negative. Um, but again, parentheses, uh, when we're talking about our revenues are good. We're actually over our budget already in all the sales tax collections, and we will be over that by the end of the fiscal year. So revenues are very healthy. Um, pulled down. You'll see in the, uh, well, the category of property tax, we did receive that check from requests. So again, we're out of budget now. We had slipped out. They got that rebate and now we've recovered that.
About thirty grand or something?
Twenty five, uh, okay, twenty five thousand. Any questions on revenues? If you look at the next page, again, I'm watching the economy does have been getting out a little less. So we're watching a flattening of our curve. Of course, we're also watching why as many new locations, although Water Burger did, uh, open a drive through service on Monday. We do have a new stock that's put in for their health inspection. That's in the shopping center across Forest Center. I think it's next to, uh, Will's Water and Health Park, yes.
Yeah.
Um, and again, Andy's is getting close. I think they called for their health inspection. And then of course, Swig will eventually come out of the ground. Uh, so we we have projected an increase in the next fiscal year, but we're watching this curve closely. And again, y'all know I get a detailed report that I'm not allowed to share, but I do watch that. So that's why I caution y'all to eat out there. Let's move to the next page, uh, that is thirty in the packet. This is overall expenditures. Uh, again, I'd like to see seventeen percent or more remaining available to be, uh, expended. This report is the knowledge. Again, we all get a mid-year, or excuse me, end of year adjustment on that one. And that is related prosecutor. Um, she went out this last fiscal year and we didn't get that number until we already approved the budget. Um, but she is, they're handling a lot more cases. Uh, and again, Chief gets hold of that. I'm sure we'll, I can act to it. Uh, everything else, we're within range on expenditures. So I'm having more concerns there. And I'll answer any questions you have. Get down to the details a little bit on page thirty nine. Again, I'd like to see seventeen percent. I don't see it, salaries and benefits, of course. And when you get a three paycheck month, sometimes that hits a little different. So that's just a timing issue. We're almost within budget there. Uh, everything else still has, um, a lot of funds to get us to the end of the fiscal year. So I don't see any concern there. Anything that's out of balance, uh, as long as I'm within budget, I'll spring a end of year budget adjustment. Uh, adjustment in the cost considerations. So let those all balance out for the audit. We go to the police department, the next page, forty. Again, we'd like to see the seventeen percent. We're not quite there. The dollar numbers aren't that big. Again, uh, we're we're over at other. Um, but again, we're talking about four hundred seventy three dollars over contracted services. We still have funds available. Actually, he's gonna really a job of kind of manage what I'm getting, um, with the, well, he's got going on on that side of the building. So overall, we're still within budget. And yeah, I don't see anything for major concern. We've already uh, replaced an engine and dealt with the maintenance issues. It's gonna be okay the rest of the year. Y'all any questions?
That's all I've got here. Thank you. Consider agenda. So agenda consists of uncontroversial thousand three nine hundred by law. I just better be approved of single motion. I'd have better use your, considering agenda by either council member by making such a party mark in motion. Number one, consider approval on July sixteen, three thousand twenty four, regular eighteen minutes. I'm not a motion, I would consider the, uh, the budget workshop and regular meeting minutes. So all in favor? Motion Paris five zero. Public area is rated a high. I will conduct a public area discussion, consider repli of five point zero zero two acre parcel located on lot three A. Lot A, your house subdivision in the town of Barnville, in Texas. The purpose of the repli is to remove and relocate a drainage easement currently on the property. Subject property is located on the roof. We have private in seven hundred fifty feet west of the intersection of Ginger Lane. The advocate is the cat, I was representing property owner Mike Law, customer of Holmes LLC, town of Barnville, file number R P two thousand twenty four, dash O O, one. Staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'm gonna turn this, I primarily have Ryan here for the next item since I had him, I had him write this up too. Uh, so I'm gonna turn it over to Ryan, but his presentation.
I favor Mayor and Council, Ryan Wells. I am a consulting planner. And I'll begin a brief staff presentation on the Molo P flat, uh, town of Barnville, project number R P twenty twenty four, zero zero one. So as stated in the introduction, this is a repli of a five point zero zero two acre parcel. Um, purpose of the repli is to vacate a drainage easement and establish a new drainage easement elsewhere on the parcel. Essentially reconfigure the drainage pattern on the property prior to a development of parcel with a single family home. Uh, because this is a repli that entails, uh, the abandonment and reconfiguration of a public drainage easement that does require further Bartonville development, town council approval of the repli. Otherwise, generally repli's are administrative in nature and at staff level. But whenever there's an easement involved, town council is required to consider and approve said repli. So, uh, this property is located on the north side, Pat Creek Court. It's a single parcel as shown in the image, uh, on the bottom of the of the screen, uh, approximately seven hundred and sixty feet west of Ginger's Way. So a repli, uh, for the Bartonville development ordinance follows the same criteria for approval as a final plan. And in some cases, there's not too much to be looking at related to the four approval criteria. Nevertheless, in the staff summary, uh, we go over all four of those criteria to identify alignment or conflict with with the required criteria consideration. So jumping into those, uh, first criteria is whether the repli conforms with the approved preliminary plan or other studies and plans. In this case, there are no changes to configuration or or dimensions of the parent lot. This is simply a repli to affect a, a, an easement. So, uh, there's no real concern about, uh, alignment with the preliminary plan or other studies and plans as, uh, the lot itself is not being affected. The second criteria is whether construction plans submitted for review, uh, uh, and approval by the by the town engineer. At this point, we haven't received any construction plans. However, uh, we're gonna be requiring the submission of a drainage and drainage plan uh, in conjunction with the submission of a building plan to make sure that as shown on the, um, on the parcel, the abandonment of that large central drainage easement in lieu of the, uh, kind of more channelized drainage easement is gonna be appropriate and adequate to manage the stormwater runoff anticipated in the basin. The third criteria is whether the plaque conforms to applicable zoning. The third criteria is whether the plaque conforms to applicable zoning and other regulations. Again, because the parcel has not been affected, continues to conform to the R E five zoning standards. And number four is whether uh, the plaque can can accommodate onsite sewer facility. The change in the drainage of patterns of the lot aren't going to affect the eligibility of a lot to have an OSSF or onsite septic facility. Um. On on the parcel to uh, support a single family residential development. So simply enough, those criteria being considered, staff recommend approval of the repli. I'm happy to take any questions.
I would like to add one thing about the uh, the grading and drainage. That will be reviewed by the town engineer. He was part of this process for the repli. And again, he will review any drainage rating uh, submitted for that lot in lieu of or it. In consideration of the new uh, drainage areas. So again, that's not a, that that will be engineer review.
Uh, was this uh. Is this the lot we thought was creating a problem while we had all the rain in April lady? That was going down the dome pretty.
There were actually, it was two different lots and we weren't certain. Um, again, what we discovered during that that last rain was uh, then a lot of that brown water was coming off of uh. Fox Run, I think it is Fox Run over there. Um, but maybe it is. Hard to prove anything was done incorrectly during those rains because so many areas failed. But yes, this was that area. Where they had cut the back of the dam. Uh, again, that wasn't against uh, what was approved previously, but we asked them to dam it back up and they did to slow that down.
Uh, if you can, there. An easement. This is a full unfinished property that will change to Z R, so wait.
No, the easement has dimensions shown on the repli so that. That a survey of the entire lot isn't necessary because the lot itself isn't being affected, but the dimensions of easement are shown on the repli.
And then. There are pieces of property that certainly will affect that. Ever future day should that property. Be sold, is that correct?
The easement will be shown on the on the recorded plaque for the property. So anybody who's. Purchasing or needs information will have that on the table. Sorry, what's question? Is there, is the advocate?
No, yeah, it's not here. There was. Oh, we do have somebody here. Any questions? This did not need to go to P and Z first just due to the nature. So it ended up not on the calendar for McAdams Engineering. Uh, I talked to Darren Andrews this afternoon. And so they did have somebody here to go have any specific questions, but we'll also try and expose.
So this exhibit just shows the easement as it presently is, right? It doesn't show what it's going to be.
No, it actually does. If you look at.
So, following through that.
Is there a pointer or something that I can? Okay. Yeah, point two is.
Yeah, you can point, use point two.
Yeah, that's fine. Alright, so the existing easement is this large central easement. It says drainage easement to be abandoned by the plaque.
Okay.
And also here you see this more channelized easement configuration. This is the twenty foot drainage easement by this plaque. So it's gonna be changed from this central basin and drainage channel. Basically pick up over here and follow the the boundary of the property to go down. Into the swell of the south end of the property. Now, this change in the drainage pattern is what the city engineer is going to review. As part of the grading and drainage plan to make sure that it has adequate capacity and doesn't. Increase the the flow rates of that drainage by channelizing and redirecting.
Can you give me the uh. Direction, north, south, east, west directions for.
So this is north, South, Patrick Road.
So that would be south.
South, yes.
Alright.
Do that will require a vision of the grain. Adding to raising the surface. In order to ensure that that water that is now losing that one area.
Yeah, the site will be regraded to. Contain the water within the the confines of that easement.
We require engineers to stand the plans for drainage drainage and they are reviewed by our engineers. So. You'll have two engineers looking at it to make sure that the calculations are correct. We've had issues in that area during construction, backing up on the adjacent property. And potentially running down and settled. So we're gonna take very closely at it.
Exactly, thank you.
Any questions from Ryan? Do the advocate like to speak? No, you're good. Okay, thank you. Time being seven eleven, I'd like to open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak in favor? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Time being seven twelve calls a public hearing. No more council discussion?
No, thank you for your input.
You have a large report.
I move to approve, I move to approve the repli of the five point zero two acre parcel located on lot three A, your house subdivision. So.
All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Number two, discussing, consider one way of black to pull four hundred and forty six one hundred and fifty. By a property situated in Vincent McDonald's survey abstract number thirteen thirty nine. AM F L to survey abstract number fifteen ninety five on West. Executive old jurisdiction of the town bar building in Texas. The property is located generally east of State Highway three seventy seven between Keith Road and Smoot Lane. The applicant is old WR man one hacker LP town bar hill five. Number PP two thousand twenty four zero zero two. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval by the road by five zero August seventh, two thousand twenty four. The staff presentation.
Current value, excuse me.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna take a couple of minutes and go through some changes that have occurred to state laws. You know, they related to ETJ and properties adjacent to a town or city. So, you know, previously, many years ago, I know that Bartonville negotiated with Flower Mountain. And received some revenue for releasing the ETJ that became tour eighteen. Um, so since that time, there have been three major changes they've all in twenty seven. Uh, twenty seventeen, uh, the reform and restricted municipal annexation process. Uh, this authorizing municipal residents to vote on whether a city could annex areas outside of its limits. Uh, in twenty nineteen, it altogether removed involuntary annexations. The city's extraterritorial jurisdiction with very few exceptions. Properties in an ETJ could stay in the ETJ indefinitely. It would only be annexed to the request of the property. Uh, at that point in time, uh, it still could have potentially been negotiated with Flower Mountain. Uh, for a release had Flower Mountain had an interest. Again, this this subdivision is much more of a denser product, a more market type product as opposed to a gated golf community. Uh, you saw Flower Mountain go down the pit. So again, there was no buyer for this property in our ETJ. Um, in twenty twenty three, the law changed again. And it actually allows property owners to de-annex from the city's ETJ with simple with a simple petition. But no longer could the towns or cities just hold this area. Um, but again, there's a currently a lawsuit in Grand Prairie because this really has hindered. Uh, cities and towns ability to, you know, to control right at their borders. Um, so again, what we found. Uh, when Heinz came was a developer willing to negotiate, not required to. They could have de-annexed. Um, they could have requested to connect to the town streets. Um, it would have been difficult, but they they could have requested that. Uh, and they could be able to build right up to the town limits. Um, but there was some benefit, uh, if the town did not oppose the creation of the mud. So they were willing to negotiate with the community. And so what came out was that agreement that council negotiated. Where they will not connect to town streets in order there will be a thirty foot buffer between this development. Uh, in the town limits. So again, a lot of changed conditions have led us here today. Heinz has been uh. Uh, very good to work with in this process and I will turn it over to Ryan to talk with preliminary plan.
Alright, thank you, Ted. Alright, so I will begin the staff presentation with height planes at first range preliminary plan. This is a town of Bartonville project number PP twenty twenty four, actually zero zero two. Alright, so as you can see here on the screen, the image to the right uh, represents the boundary of the preliminary plats and significant parcel of of property. This is a preliminary plaque to create one thousand one hundred and fifteen single family lots. And thirty five non-residential blocks. This is located in the western ETJ of the town of Bartonville. And the project intends to provide public streets, public water and public sewer service, all parcels within this subdivision. The total project area is four hundred and sixty one point eight five eight acres. Uh, and it is comprised of five original tracts, which would be basically rendered, you know, disappeared and replaced with. This uh, a large number of new lots in public right of way. The property is located on the east uh, east of State Highway three seventy seven between Keith Road and Smoot Lane, again, within the western part of the ETJ. So let's step back a little bit. Um, the Texas Local Government Code, section two forty two, authorizes interlocal agreements for regulation of subdivisions in the ETJ. That's because. At times in the ETJ, you find yourself with multiple jurisdictions having presumed authority over the development of that land. And so in order to clarify and streamline the review and and regulatory process. For these properties in the ETJ, which are technically in the county, but under some level in influence and authority of the city. These interlocal uh, agreements or interlocal cooperation agreements. Are often uh, established to as to assign that that authority to one or the other um, uh, governmental entity. So. In two thousand two, uh, Denton County and Bartonville uh, signed an ILA. Uh, granting the subdivision authority within the ETJ to the town of Bartonville. So that's why we as an entity are um, administering this subdivision. However, the the interlocal agreement does not grant zoning authority. There's still no zoning in the county. Um, and uh, it retains the um, the septic system, culvert and development permitting authority at the county level. Uh, the ILA and Texas Local Government Code also state that the town cannot regulate the use. Size or number of buildings in the ETJ. So it's a very much a technical ministerial. Uh, process to review subdivisions within the ETJ. We can't assign any zoning regulations. And have very limited authority over what actually happens on the land once subdivided. Uh, so. So again, this property um, would include uh, one thousand one hundred and fifty lots over five phases. Um, included in the application were a preliminary drainage layout, which is an excerpt of that is shown here on the screen. Preliminary pad grading. A preliminary water layout, preliminary sewer layout. And a flood study for White's Branch because. Uh, there are county and city regulations related to. Flood plane management and flood mitigation that requires the grading of properties to be a certain level above. The flood plane level. And so this flood study was the baseline data necessary to. Verify that the grading of the of the development would meet those standards. So the Bartonville Development Ordinance uh, identifies a number of criteria. That one would look at when evaluating a preliminary plot. And so we were able to apply those criteria in a very limited manner because again. Certain elements of our standards do not apply to the ETJ. For example. Criteria one is whether the preliminary plaque conforms with the approved land study or other studies and plans. None of those will be applied in this case. So criteria one is not not applicable. Criteria two is. Is to evaluate whether the the layout of the required public improvements and town utilities. Have been approved by the town engineer. None of these utilities are actually going to be provided for or served by the town. However, they did provide preliminary utility layouts. And we did review that as part of the preliminary process. Um, and there are a certain number of utility issues and items that are addressed in the conditions of approval, which we'll get to later on in this presentation. Number three is whether the plaque conforms to applicable zoning and other regulations, as I mentioned before. That doesn't apply here because this is the ETJ. And number four, what how um, the plaque accommodates onsite sewage facilities. Again, this property will be served by uh, public sewer. And so there's no OSSF or or septic systems that will be um, incorporated into this project. Now, in addition to the Bartonville Development Ordinance, primarily because our applicability of those standards is so limited. We also took a look at the Texas Local Government Code, section two twelve, which is the basically the subdivision regulations. And within that, there are a number of criteria that we also could apply to our review of this ETJ um, preliminary plaque. So a few of those uh, criteria are as follows. Number one, whether the plaque conforms to the general plan of the municipality. And its current and future streets, alleys, parks, playgrounds and public utility facilities. Similarly, criteria two is whether the plaque conforms to the general plan for the extension of the municipality. And its roads, streets and public highways within the municipality and in the ETJ. So the within the context of these two criteria. The uh, the layout and design of this plaque meets the town's desire to avoid connection. From the new development to the town street system as is laid out in the development agreement. So we went through and made sure that none of the streets had a potential to connect to the cities of the town's existing road system. Uh, we confirmed that the streets within the development are going to be maintained by the municipal utility district. And then also identified that there are thirty four open space lots, a number of which are presumably going to provide necessary parts and recreation facilities for the development. Criteria three is whether there's a bond for performance of the of the uh, public improvements, again, within the ETJ, that doesn't apply. And number four is whether the the plaque conforms any rules adopted under section two twelve point zero zero two. And one of the key rules under there is that the the development shall promote the health, safety, morals and general welfare. Of the municipality and the safe orderly and helpful development of the municipality. And taking those standard or those those kind of elements, we looked at a couple of specific. Um, uh, characteristics of the project as it relates to the health, safety, morals and general welfare. For example, we verified that the project would provide added facilities for all the lots, meaning each lot is served by water and sewer adequately draining. One of the things we identified is that as proposed, the project lacked a secondary access. For emergency access. That's something we discussed during the pre-application uh, meeting with the developer. And something that is required by both the international fire code as well as the Bartonville Development Ordinance. So we have a condition of approval that would um, direct the developer to meet that requirement. There are also some certain easements for utility facilities that we identified as missing. So there's a condition of approval for that. The uh, developer provided a flood study again to uh, verify the base flood elevation with a hundred year flood plane along White's Branch. Um. We also reviewed the lot grading plan to confirm that all lots would be graded to at least two feet above that base flood elevation. So there's. Very little risk, none for those residences to be flooded within a hundred year flood cycle. Um, and we have a condition of approval that would require a letter of map revision or low mark. Uh, to be submitted to FEMA to establish visiting flood plain boundary as the official boundary for White's Branch within within the town, the town's ETJ. One other item that we identified in our review was um, uh. In Bartonville Development Ordinance, section three point one K. It's there's a provision for street offsets less than three hundred feet. So if you look at the image to the right. You can see uh, Miracle Trail and Peppervine Lane. There's about a one hundred and forty foot offset between those two streets as they meet Russland's Trail. And so technically, that wouldn't meet our standards for the layout of the of the streets. Um. However, it Bartonville Development Ordinance, section one point one one, there is a waiver process whereby the developer can request a waiver of that standard in certain circumstances. And so that was submitted with this packet. Um, if the waiver were not to be granted, then the realignment of those roads would be a condition of approval. Um, staff considered the waiver and in discussion with the developer. These are very low traffic local roads. So we don't find that there would be much of a of a liability in granting the waiver for this offset. So earlier this time, the zoning commission heard these uh, these criteria and conditions. And made a recommendation to town council for approval with the following conditions. Condition one is that a minimum fifteen foot public utility easement for water and sewer utility utilities would need to be established on certain lots. To correspond with uh, crossings or essentially traversing of the lot by those utilities. And those are listed A through G. Condition two is that on the final plot, a simple wide utility easement shall be located along the property line. Of all lots and adjacent to rice away. This allows for franchise utilities such as gas, cable and other utilities to serve all the lots uh, as they develop. Number three is related to that uh, that street offset, unless the waiver is granted by town council, in which case uh, condition three would not apply. Condition four, that a second access point, State Highway three seventy-seven, other than High Plains Trail, shall be constructed and sold otherwise established on the final plat for the first phase of development, and the secondary access shall be maintained so such time as another secondary access road, for example, Street A is completed. That way, International Fire Code uh, via Bartonville Development Ordinance, as well as the needs of our ESD, our MET, provides secondary access should our primary access, which is High Plains Trail, somehow be blocked and preventing emergency responses from accessing those first moments within the developer. Condition five is that in the preliminary sewer layout, there's a section of sewer that just wasn't connected, and so we're late, we're pointing that back out. And the, and the engineer designs for the sewer, uh, those systems had to be fully connected and provided for um, positive drainage for the sewer system. Condition six is that a twenty-foot wide sewer easement located on Lot fourteen, lots forty-eight to forty-nine, shall be labeled by this plaque. Kind of like we talked about with the re-plat, that's how you establish new easements on our plaque. Number seven, that on the final plat, there's a new note required, which means that all parcels ending in X, with the exception of Lot forty-eight, Lot one X are open space parcels owned and maintained by the HOA. They shall have a public access and utility easement over their entirety. That's because there are public water and sewer easements on those lots, and it wants to protect those easements by having, uh, sorry, those utilities by having easements on those lots to allow access to uh, those utilities for maintenance and access to lots for public, uh, public enjoyment. Condition eight is that the final plat shall show a drainage easement over the entirety of all open space slots containing the revised one-hundred-year floodplain as determined by the flood study. That protects the floodplain to make sure that it doesn't get approached upon and maintains both adequate access and capacity for floodwaters. Condition nine is that a letter of map revision shall be submitted to FEMA for that uh, the, the flood study findings to establish the new floodplain boundary. And finally, there's a general correction. Under the owner certification, there's just a typo that would point out that need to be corrected on the final plat. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions now or later on in this presentation. Thank you. Here, Matt.
Any questions?
I, I have a question. So if, if you're going through the, the list of conditions, if I understand this, in order to have that second access point, the condition this stat is recommended is is another access off of three seventy-seven, nothing is going to tie to the town, either in regular road or in any emergency roads. Is that correct?
I'm more concerned about the first part, just to make sure that there's a secondary access, the, the location of that, I know there's a discussion at P and Z that we're going to get into. But the, the, the key concern is that there's a secondary access so that if the, the High Plains Road is, is going to be a primary road in the first phase of development, if that gets blocked by an accident or a natural disaster, ESD can still get to the home to the development.
And the, the applicant is here, council member, um, but yes, we discussed this in the pre-development meeting. Smoot Road off of three seventy-seven would be improved, provide that secondary access.
The one I should have missed is the, you know, the condition that they're not tied to Bartonville.
You did not miss, that's right, yeah.
Any other questions for Ryan? The applicant? Thank you, Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm Mayor Dooty Council. My name is Jason Weaver. I'm the GM Civil and Project Civil Engineer for the High Plains at First Branch. Uh, I really don't have a lot to add between the presentation Ryan had and what that added between the interlocal agreements and what we got to this place uh, for the, for the property. Um, the only thing I will add is obviously y'all are aware that this is a municipal utility district. Uh, and just so everybody's aware that the, the public water, sewer, and drainage in the streets that are all going to be um, installed for this development will be only maintained by the mud. So it's not a burden on the town of Bartonville. So obviously, the residents that, you know, buy a lot there, you know, they're going to have a tax rate that hits that helps, you know, pay for those improvements over time, uh, and help to maintain those facilities. So just wanted to make sure that was there. Um, as far as the conditions that Ryan laid out, uh, we've gone through them with him. Obviously, we don't have any uh, issue with those. Obviously, we did have the waiver request uh, for that offset intersection. And obviously, in our request, we just showed that, you know, obviously Bartonville with larger lots and stuff that y'all deal with, uh, you know, you don't run across, you know, that proximity for roads quite as often as other typical subdivisions. And so obviously, we just, you know, supplied some conditions that, you know, like uh, some adjacent cities being adjusted in our dial. For work, you know, their standards for a local residential street offset are using the range of a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty-five feet. And that's under standards in this case for a hundred and forty-ish, I think, something like that. So, you know, in a general, like, normal subdivision type of thing, when you've got the, your higher density product, I mean, that's, that's kind of a typical deal. So uh, obviously, from a, a health, safety, welfare standpoint, as professional engineer, and obviously, I, you know, I do not have an issue with it. And obviously, if the other cities didn't have that type of regulation and something that we do time and time and time again, then obviously, we would comply and revise the alignment. So uh, other than that, I, I really don't have much more to, and, um, to, uh, you know, to add to it besides that, thank Ryan's, in the first hand, they're obviously very excited about this project. Uh, you know, in addition to the design and stuff that we're working through, you know, they're working through amenities and, you know, their, their vision for this property and, you know, and, and Jack and Robert are still very much involved with it and, you know, taking a lot of passion to it. So uh, I, I think it's going to be something that, you know, people will enjoy and, and as far as a digital product that's out in the ETC uh, and it's going to be a, a good subdivision that people can be proud of. And so we're excited to be here. And to tell any of the questions, I'd be happy to answer. And don't walk behind this here, in case, no questions will ever go.
No, thank you. Any discussion?
The meeting was adjourned, right, and the motion, state position of the waiver, and also about the two conditions.
What are our position now, or? So I think the motion will be approved on their platform for sixty-one point eight five eight acres of property situated in the inch and mile survey after number one, three, three, nine, and double survey after number five, nine, five. Including the waiver and ten, requiring the ten conditions outlined.
Thank you. All in favor?
You know, with the, Ryan, it's all of our, that, 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 that's the reason. Despite the fact that I won't use it twice in weekends, I keep it.
Number three, discussion to approve the ordinance, many of the comments you're having. Staff presentation she finished.
Good evening again. Uh, in your packet, uh, basically, this is just acknowledging you received the guns for the, the two vehicles uh, that will be uh, paying off the next three pistol years on the government capital. If you look, the total cost of one fifty-six has not changed. You look at the new cars, the total cost of it is one oh four, three sixty-two, and then outfit those is fifty-one, six, thirty-eight. Um, once again, I, we want to thank y'all for this. This was a need. I know, um, seeing that many cars here is a shock for some of the community members. I've heard that, and I just want to acknowledge, I, I understand that. And like, when I took this position, I'm not going to ask for anything we don't need. And this is very much a need for down to one car. As you know, first of all, I like to get out also, and just one car wasn't practical. So this is one of those things that was a need, and I appreciate y'all supporting that. I'm sure you're going to have some questions. I, I don't mind answering those questions to anybody that they're going to ship to me, a, a meet with, a coffee, I'll meet them at the house to explain in more detail of why this was something, because we see all these new cars out there, and I get it, and they're expensive. But this was something that not only, I think I liked the new look, the image. We're going to be, you know, out there more visible, it's cooler, and it's their car, it's their office. And when you start looking at that, that boosts morale, um, you know, just pride. And, and it's safe, and we should reduce our cost in maintenance, that's the goal. So once again, thank you for doing that, and I'll answer any other questions that we only have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for, and the mayor for initiating and then sending the, the letter that you initiated sent to us, just by the reason for your request. And I certainly am a long way to explain it, and I don't, you know how much I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate all the nice comments. I'm feeling pretty good here tonight. I've never heard a quote like that. Thank you, guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
This is read by a little guardian group.
How moved is we approved ordinance, admitting the crime control prevention budget, supposed to be here beginning October one, twenty twenty-three, ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, for being replaced with an amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
I said, all in favor? Motion carries, object, thank you. Number four, discuss and consider resolution, pointing additional, uh, alternate municipal court judge, um, Shannon.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have our regular municipal court judge, and we have an alternate. And we have had a hearing on the schedule on the books for a while, and it came up that both of our judges are unavailable. And instead of placing budget and all the staff time we put in for this hearing, uh, the prosecutor worked with Andrea to find an, a suitable uh, judge coming in and for him to be able to handle that hearing, he needs to be as smart as an alternate.
So this is a one-time temporary thing, or we're going to keep?
He'll stay on for this term, and we'll see if we need him again, but instead of rescheduling, she's already sent out all the postage for all the juror notices and whatnot. We thought this would be easier.
Okay. How long is his term?
It's two years. It runs concurrent with the mayor's term.
I'm going to approve the resolution upon an additional caution of municipal court division, so.
All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Shannon.
Number five, discussing considered acceptance and summation of no new revenue, overapproval, and minimus tax rate calculations, take action to consider cost tax rate for the public input considerations, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, regular town council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is a state requirement that goes over all of the rates. And this is where you see that massive document of calculations. You know, when that teacher was right, that was one day I was going to be traced with this. And uh, you know, the county does generate the, the initial report. Uh, but they say I was able to find an error, and so, and the, the initial numbers came out, and it looked like even if we utilize this year's tax rate, we have discussed, that petition could trigger a vote uh, on the referendum on the tax rate. Uh, when, as for recalculation, and we are not in that category. So again, our, our current rate is seventeen cents, seventeen point three six four six cents. Um, the no new revenue rate, again, I'm not talking about that, that used to be called the effective rate, is that, you know, one would generate the same revenue is sixteen cents, sixteen point two two eight two cents. The voter approval rate, again, that one initially came back under the seventeen cents. Uh, that includes a one-time increment that we have not utilized before by always going up to that maximum allowed. Uh, so your voter approval rate is the eighteen point one five six zero cents. Again, I mentioned earlier, the minimus rate is twelve, the one that would generate uh, half a million in new revenue, and that is at twenty-four point three nine seven cents. Uh, when you adopt this, uh, again, you can, their final tax rate adoption process is, is in September. Whatever you choose tonight, you may choose lower in September, you may not go higher. So again, the voter approval rate is eighteen, one, five, six, zero. You could go as high as that and not trigger a petition for an election, or just under that. Um, that's my staff recommendation, because we built it on the seventeen, three, six, four, six, but that is councils per p, uh, sector tax rate. Um, it will become more challenging. Again, they continue to change state laws. Uh, we did use, we would use the last of the increment this year um, for the maintaining that seventeen, three, six, four, six rate. Um, it is possible with the growth projected over the next year that uh, unless there is a debt component added in the future, that your minimum rate will uh, actually fall below uh, what we've been utilizing at seventeen, three, six, four, six. So it, it could force a decrease in your tax rate.
You just had to answer a question, because I might have, so.
So it's something to be aware of as we go through this process.
Any other questions?
I think that, in all of the minimums of budget, I think, we did on seventeen, three, six, four, six. Now, seeing the business, it's why we're going to process it.
Thank you. Roll call.
I need a motion and a second, first.
I make the motion. We would should approve the tax rate on seventeen, three, six, four, six, for one hundred dollar valuation for the fiscal year beginning October the first, twenty twenty-four, ending September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, scheduling September the seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, for October the fifth, on the tax rate for the adoption of sale tax.
Thank you. And roll call vote, Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Tim Chapman?
Yeah.
Councilmember Stans?
Yeah.
Councilmember Crandall?
Yeah.
And Councilmember Aaron?
Yes.
Motion carries, Anderson.
And you. Number six, deciding the sewer level of Bartonville New Development Corporation fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, for the budget, staff presentation of that.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Council, this is the detailed budget. Again, not a whole lot of detail, because the B C D C doesn't actually do a lot. Um, there's sales tax revenue for the coming fiscal year. And if you go all the way back to twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, this is page one thirty, by the way, your packet if you're looking. Um, you know, it was a hundred ninety-seven, ninety fifty was collected. But again, in twenty twenty-three, when that sales tax was reallocated, uh, B C D C now is one-eighth of a cent of the taxable sales, and uh, the street maintenance tax is five eighths. So that's why that, there's bigger than those projections. Um, so the budget for this year, they went ahead and put a hundred thousand in for grant expenses in case something comes up, they didn't want to have to go amend the budget. Uh, that would still come to council for your also approval, and they have to go through that. Uh, marketing at twelve thousand, they're looking at possibly doing that community guide again. Uh, it's been a few years, that had, that basically promoted all businesses within Bartonville, and also kind of gave the flavor of the community. And we've discussed that before, so they're looking at possibly doing that again this coming fiscal year. Um, computer software and copier, minimal. Um, again, they don't spend a lot because Shannon and I handle basically everything that goes through there. Uh, so consulting fees have gone from fifty thousand down to fifty hundred.
You know, what, what was that, that caught my attention?
Y'all had one of the only triple certified, decan on all people as your town administrator. So thanks. That, that's why, um, because.
I know it's definitely, I know it's the, uh, maintenance expenses and you drop the oil off.
Yeah, so then this fiscal year, that depends on when it lands. So they have approved significant upgrades to landscaping at the corner of the banking forum seven. That's not, if you've noticed, it's greening up, we've got the sprinkler systems repaired finally. Um, and they've ground down the stumps and they've taken out all the dead that's there, uh, that we were dealing with. Um, and I think there's another thirty thousand dollars worth of new plants, and flowers and shrubs are going to be planted. Uh, they've also budgeted to have the horse. Uh they've also budgeted to have the horses polished again, it's been a while. Uh I actually found pictures of what those were installed, they do look a lot different when they get this weather. Uh so again, really getting the image back on that corner of kind of the flavor of Bartonville. Um so that, they're gonna spend a lot this year, they don't expect us to need to spend a lot again uh in the future on that. And so that's why that's anticipated to go down significantly. Sorry, I think I'm losing my voice. Uh but I'll answer any other questions y'all have, but they've really uh taken pride in going out there and and looking at that corner and really trying to bring it back. Um I don't remember if I talked about it in this uh forum. We had a study done and that was actually, that grass and the dirt was planted over asphalt. So when tax stopped, you know, when the town took it, I don't know exactly how it all worked, there were some areas that it's only visiting and we've hit asphalt, that's why the trees have been dying. Um and so the reason the landscape they're looking at can survive in that kind of environment, so they're, instead of trying to re-plant trees and just gonna die. Um we went ahead and did the time and then just study and then I think they did. Thirty holes, beginning was anywhere from four inches to eighteen inches and then asphalt. So, it's that would be a very expensive job to turn up and they said they didn't go down that route. So. The more you know.
So was the road moved at some point?
Yes, that was when it was realigned to its current alignment, four oh seven used to stop there, four by stop apparently.
Yeah, it used to stop right here. Yeah.
And then went straight through instead of the curve that's there now.
Then we had there, that'll run down, he does the north down now and that bridge. Yeah. And I'm not mistaken, I think yes, we make it all covered up.
Yeah, they just put air on the station. And similarly, the town council, again, they they didn't want to take the time, because they didn't want to continue to plant things that die and have to continue to spend that money, so. Uh what's proposed now is our our plans that will be able to survive and again, shit more shall sort there. So you have dog and other questions, all?
Thank you, Ken.
I'll make a motion to approve the D C D C budget for fiscal year beginning October third of twenty twenty four and ending on September thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
All in favor, motion carries five zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Number seven, discussing the civil department crime control convention with. This year, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty five, budget, stat representation, chief.
Mayor council. Uh the CCPD met at a public hearing on May the twenty third to approve the budget that's was proposed to y'all. And then also we had a hearing, y'all had a hearing back on July sixteenth. If you look at the packet, uh there were some increases or some things that one what was left, there was a thirty thousand dollars for the position and we get it approved. Some of the other increases were having the equipment. Uh the fifty thousand is for blocks and then we added twenty one thousand for some radios that we talked about portable radio that we talked about at last council meeting. Portable radios for the officers, this currently, we don't have enough for everybody, I want to make sure we add radios for everybody. Um we're gonna stay the same style, there's a lot of them out there more expensive, but this works for us. Perfectly fine. And then also on your training expenses, uh they added two thousand dollars to training, which I'm very grateful for. Uh I'll be attending, I've always attended the Texas Police Chiefs Association meetings. Um I think it's important, I served on several boards. Um it's just a good way to network and utilize those resources, sometimes it needs some help. It is nice to have those, that's down, we'll be in Galveston this coming year and the next year we'll be in Fort Worth. Also, the uh the training that I have to do every year, the leadership training. And then also I'm getting ready to send a lieutenant to a training, basically, apparently it'd be executive level, but it's local. So there's several different trainings that we're adding and adding that two thousand dollars really helps us to be able to accommodate uh those kinds of requests. Uh the other ones basically stay the same, if you have any questions at all, I'll be more than happy to answer those for you.
If I may, I'd like to make a statement on the revenue. Uh one of the things I was working on in the write-up for your overall budget, you know. More often than not, you should be able to look at the various sales taxes in the community and they all should equal, you know, the percentages. Um unfortunately, in our case, the area that comprises the Lantana Town Center. Previously, before the annexation, was uh brought uh brought into uh didn't freshwater districts, uh six and seven. They already had a sales tax over that area, so the reason our sales tax revenue is projected at a hundred twenty thousand for a quarter cent. So none of that is uh included in our prime control district. Only Marty V's, that commercial uh belong for seven north of there is included for private control. Uh it is not, but nothing's selected in Manhattan. So, yeah, they're just just clarity, so, you know, some of there's a lot of discussion about Ryners, there's not more there in that. Those, the freshwater districts existed prior to annexation and prior to the prime control, so. I don't, well, I think it was decided by the contri, I said, control, I think, that far.
Part of the original contract was three eighty three, I'm just sure, most of you probably already.
Just just clearing you again, just for anybody watching.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight.
All in favor, motion carries five zero and. Number eight, discussing considered um admitting time allow the. Stat presentation.
Great, mayor and council. Um currently, we're open eight A M, four thirty P M, Monday through Friday, that's a total of forty two and a half hours. Um I do end up with overtime for uh the ladies who work in the office. Uh but they attend some of our night meetings, because we have quite a few for a small community, um plus the special events. And what I'm proposing is, for your consideration, is a reduction. Uh to thirty eight hours, again, that would be eight A M to four thirty P M, uh Monday through Thursday. Friday, eight to noon. Um again, difference in town hall for Bartonville and other cities. We have no water accounts, nobody's coming in to pay their bills, no one's coming in to set up their water service. Uh I can tell you afternoon on Fridays, it's people paying tickets, which they can do online. Uh or Monday through Thursday or before noon. Um but again, I would never propose anything that would reduce our availability to residents. Um most of our activity is generated through email or phone calls, we do get walk-ins, I mean, they enjoy when people come in to see us. Um but again, this is, it's proposed as a model program to see if I helps me with overtime. Um maybe take a little bit of strain off of the night meetings. I never propose anything that's only personal, but I can tell you that uh this one does have a little bit of personal. Tinge in it, uh just to reduce uh some of the stress, because on those Fridays, I would like to telecommute when I've already done maybe fifty hours in a week. Uh if possible. But again, this is council decision, this is not a that or a mayor decision. Uh we have closed, actually, the mayor and I have talked before about um. When we were short-staffed and we weren't open uh to the public, nine to three, we never received any complaints. And it's to do the, do the work, you know, we're still here during that time. Um and again, for the salary staff, this doesn't change anything, we're gonna work to the top, when the job is been done, we're gonna get it done. Uh for the hourly staff, um we're only open thirty eight hours, they are hourly, they don't, I'm not proposing paying forty for thirty eight hours of work, they would stay and work through unless they already had a night. Um both ladies, or both of them maxed out, it would come comp time.
But close, one's max.
One's close and one's max, constant comp time, so I'm gonna go over time. With that time, I'd like to try and manage that a little bit as well, um. Just like on the police side, there's only four of us, sometimes it's hard to schedule time off. Uh time away, um when. Let me just step one off, four off front and then increase the backup, this. Me and Shannon on the front desk, what we can do is do that. We're pretty inefficient, but the twenty two of us, we can get through the front desk, but uh. But again, it it it's just, it's just a way to try and manage that process a little bit. Again, if council is, is interested in entertaining.
So you're proposing like a three-month pilot?
Yes.
Type of deal trial?
Starting September one and then revis, revising or revisiting it. Uh I say through November thirtieth and we visit every December meeting.
As long as the work's getting done.
Ed, you think this makes sense? That place in you, you know what makes a shop run the best? So I'm, I'm supporting that.
I agree.
I think if you look at this from a bird's eye view. Among the beloved, you know, dancing boys that have got. Jobs that they're deep, they all think, but you're gonna be there to get the job. They all put in that, I put in, put the time that you've been here, so. The greatest thing about this is that there again, in Mayberry, you can do all the things that you can't do in another one. But it all, I think if it makes, you're the, you're the one that's gonna make it work. And I certainly appreciate you adding to about. Watching the old time, trying to compensate to that. To give it now to the employees, I admit, but there's little things that happen in life that you can't control, but then you have to have time to do. So personally, I think it's a good idea and makes up you to make it work.
That's just a lot about the ordinary, I just did a little bit of research, but like. I think Corin, I don't know if Louisville still all have reduced. Open office hours for town hall about employees, obviously, I think it's more than forty hours.
Yeah. And some of the bigger ones that leave four days, but they, they still stay open five days, well, because they have something to pull on, right, worth like. Uh we got, we're good friends with their town manager.
I move to be amended town hall hours of operation. To eight, four thirty, Monday through Thursday and eight till noon on Fridays.
Sorry.
All in favor, motion carries five zero, I think you're up pretty much. Close session pursuit of the meeting today, I checked, that's I believe, council will make this closing session, session one with Texas government code. Number one, section five five one, number seven one, petition town attorney to seek legal advice and attorney regarding legal issues related to the E T J. Issues related to the first grants development, issues related to emergency access to and from neighboring property. And on legal issues related thereto, number two, section five five one point oh seven one, consultation town attorney to seek legal advice and attorney regarding legal issues related to the change with. State law change to zoning law, minimal block size provisions and land use issues and all legal issues. Related thereto. Number three, section five five one point oh seven four, personal matter to deliberate and consider appointment, employment and valuation, reassessment duties, discipline or dismissal of public officer to with. Town administrator, time being seven fifty nine, we convene in the closing.
Thank you, town administrator.
Help you out.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, we'll see y'all later, thanks for the kind words.
I'm glad, thank you, I really have. No, I don't know, that's.
It's there.
Sorry, I couldn't make it out to your.
I have plans, you know, I have my daughter, they can probably go, so take care of her, suddenly, what's the wellness and getting each other all that. So.
Or just do the game, and then just pull that in the game? That that one?
No, that's first rank. They are, they left my gate open twice, my cow got out, when one dies, I'm gonna take one, I'm gonna dump it on there.
You know, I still have my box of bombs, stuff like that, and so I can black out and take care of that pot.
That sounds good.
Most of the shit would be okay. Listen, we thank. Look, this is some of that biggest force, uh, because it is on, did it have the criteria that you need, why? Looking at, you know, we're gonna. So I wouldn't hit it, I mean. We did the initial, Gary, uh you know.
Do the allegations and then do it, because.
Someone, um. Uh go over and have, just sort of. Reason why he's telling you is choose. Team eleven, the others, maybe they just ask, he may just kind of, could cover that off the eyes, cross the T's and C's, by the time they got the gals, they got off. His arms just, you know, wrist, yes, uh. They could, again, they, I don't know. It was not hit. It's like. Scrape, just. It was. So, the way our process, right, we didn't have a lot, he makes recognition here. You did all this, everything. If you need this, I suppose, you. You couldn't kill them. I just said it, they're on the stage, you know, it did, we did, they had a double golf, it was there, Dillon County. Our guy, of course, they probably do the farm, and they probably see and say, what did you see?
Yeah.
And and here's the thing, he mentioned the, basically, I see, and it's not, let's see, I said, I don't know what they said at this point, he says. He tends to be, as we're, but it's not, it's not, you know, basically, I don't know what to look at. But um just, I'm not sure what crew that is, so you may just move the heads up, yeah.
Or tell him to contact me and then I'll set it up. No, I mean, he wants to contact me and get set up. You know, when the.
And if he wants me. Yeah, because there may be, I'm looking from five thirteen to five eleven.
There's a med.
It was on a Thursday night.
You have any ambulance?
I think we.
Currently.
I think it's the same crew that came out and first, I mean, I'll be, I'll pull it for, yeah, obviously, but I'll all send you, I'll send you something, I'll give a lieutenant in the morning, but I just want to be talking. First, I mean, listen, we're not, you know, it is an investigation, it is what it is, but um. Yeah, I did. I was an internal person on France, that was a long month, year and a half, that happened, but. We'll see. Yeah. And then do it outside, it's just. Better side of research. So you knew. Communicable, based one twelve, 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 and then I'm trying to, I'm serious, right? Yeah, you, you are, you do that, yeah, well, we, uh, we had our six, you know, we were fine, and then we went, we went to the seven, and that's that power shift, the two, two. Eight-hour shifts, exactly, every time. Uh but now we work four until, with the tendency, at least been out for seven weeks. He shouldn't get back in three weeks, I don't know. And then. As a support, right? That's what I did, want to do.
The wire of, uh, the, the, these are.
You got some of that?
Okay, yeah. There's something wrong.
The one's on the part of yours. Yeah. But this one, I think, is more. He is, he's not.
He takes important scene, yeah.
He takes important things, yeah.
So, you know, the. So you should, inscription, you can show it, whatever, right, we, that's my, you, you're really, it's, it's, we're actually, we're, we. Yeah, I also wanted to. I mean, if, if I, I don't know, I'm more compliant, like, oh, we didn't. Perfect four, really, that's that. So I don't know, they reached out, um, the song of their, to, uh, email, I think, was, uh. So. Um. Basically, conduct, you know, he has managed by, you got kind of thing. Um, reached out again, yeah, they have, they call it power. So, yeah, and, uh, they're basically, um, he reads, I haven't had that phone, yeah, so I don't know if it has got that, or something to the commander. Um, but, um. You know, I guess in plain, um, you know, use our, just simply, I'd say, we're looking into it, we're with, also, straight, we're gonna have, they're straight, we're part of, like, if that's need something. See, yeah, we're gonna take a look at it, so it appears, um. I just, uh, you know, I don't. But I just wanna give you. Oh, I just wanna give you a heads up. Yeah.
What if they don't want that favor?
They do what you're feeling, if you say, hey, did you see anything, what was, did you notice? Did he, you know, is that apparently had a cut, but that was probably them getting, they didn't do that. Um, cause apparently. Yeah, I mean, cause there, the call was, he was acting crazy, the neighbor had a break. The guy never had a break. The neighbor had a break, I guess, oh, it was like, they girl had this. You know, I remember calling.
You're, you're getting, we're getting, yeah, we're.
Yes, exactly, no, we can't, it's just, it's just looking at it, and I go, let's look into this thing, yeah, it's a. But, yeah, they may just get a statement from, right, yeah, I just wanna let you know.
Yeah, just.
Everything else going good?
Feel like I'm empty at time, you know, just gonna get out there.
And it's just because of budget, everything went up, and we got all these things. Because the budget. You know, it's easy to, honestly, it's true, spend money on duty, see, we have a budget, we're buying, and you gotta do it.
Oh, yeah.
So now, yeah, I gotta hire these people, and I gotta, we've been interviewing, and, you know.
Thirty-six and thirty-three.
Yeah, yeah, we're doing really good, I, we.
That's pretty good, it's.
I, I was scared to death because we had it for a month. And going into the third week, we only had fifteen napkins. I'm gonna, only, but then the last few days, it's just, like, people were telling me, the last week, good, and then, like I said, we lost it out. Last year, that, and we didn't have, they were all done once. They weren't greedy, they did not read the qualification. He said, yeah, and then I come on my head. Something happened, I'm gonna.
We're all, yeah, that's what we, that's.
We're gonna have all the gits and stuff, I'm forgetting.
Well, hang in there.
Yeah, I think I'd like to, oh, with your, but it's been out for a week. Now, with the buzz down, we had to work, we had too many, had to do your sector, and we proposed this sector right on, that was all last two weeks. So I mean, yeah, two weeks, and that'll be, so kind of preparing all that, presenting it. Now I can focus just on the next screen, and then we'll, we'll show that in a minute, but.
I mean, yeah, I'm used to like full days or half days, and we used to do a full day and, well. Do your presentation, J B, and we had to help. On our, you know, accomplishments to, to hit our five year, which. I'm good enough in that, but we, it's thirty minutes, and when we get them, like, cool, let's go, uh, easier.
Yeah, I do, I do a list of things, as a common, I do it for me, because. When I say a common, my things that we're doing, yeah, so I arranged my to-do list, and I said, you're right, so I use it as I print it out, and later, okay. You know, they gotta get done, yeah.
So, they are, I had a couple, whatever, the guys, and C C T, they're talking, I talk, I leave some calls. That's why I sort of talked about it there. I wanted to.
Takes long, you know.
It's almost like, it's, it's weird, but.
It's changing the first, because no one's, it used to be, you'd get your new one, and everybody go, everybody paying on them, okay, they suck and mothballed, and. Spilled out of the shipyards, it, it worse coming to worse.
Well, that's what I wanted to do with the team, that thirteen still, I was, the reason for trying to get on the back, who is it still, it's everything. And they're like, I don't know, they have it, because again, people drive it.
So you can, you gotta play the store, you can turn it down mothballed, and you can take it off, and you're out of the back. But you can, but it's there in case you had to fit something. Put a radio back in there, but you set it back on, you know, new key count, you're gonna go take that off, but.
Yeah, and, and that's what I'm thinking, I've been with one of them, cause I'm, they gave me a car, because I think, I don't think. It stripped it down, just took it off.
Or, or, I'm driving first.
Really?
Oh, yeah, no, because we, we created the taxi, they took my car, so I'm, oh, we kidding, Tony's car, all the answers you would have. Like, I don't know, I just, I didn't, I didn't, for maybe, well, it's close, I haven't hit anything.
Hey, and they offered me that, that I would, I said, they have, I used to take them, you know, okay, who gets you that, cause. I mean. That's gas, I do. That'd be different, and, and I don't, but that, I got, I got a little toy about in his fifties, I shouldn't have been driving that, so he driving my wife's car, and she was like that. So. Cause I had a personal car, and I go golfing, ride to the tavern, and a beer, whatever.
You get it, something.
You gotta have something, but it's like, it's an old, oh, six and three convertible like that. About fifty, and it only has forty thousand, push it in the shop now, it's gonna cost me six grand to get it out, that's the only thing about that, I mean, it's, but, you know, I paid on it, whatever, so.
And everything costs, right?
Everything costs.
Great.
But, hey, thanks again, take care.
Yeah, whatever you do to help, I hope, I appreciate it, chief, thank you, bye, bye.